September 12th, 2024. And I want to welcome all of y'all that are present here in the building as well as those that are viewing us online. I'd like to make mention that Mr. Dewise has some family matters he needs to be attending to tonight, and I would like to ask you to keep him in your prayers, him and his family. And with that, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to invite Reverend Scott Mathis and Director of Technology and Cyber Security Board for the invocation. If you would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. Dear Lord, we just thank you so much for this day you've given us, God. We thank you for all the blessings that you give us each and every day, God. I want to pray for this meeting this evening, God, that you will just be with us as we conduct the business of the school system. And pray for each of our board members, that you'll continue to give them wisdom in the decisions they have to make. Pray for Mr. Dewise as he's not feeling well this evening, God. And pray for our superintendent, Ms. Dillard, that you'll continue to be with her, God. And I just want to pray for the Appalachian School District and Barrow County, God, that you'll just continue to be with them during this difficult time, God. Just be with our students as well and our staff and just put a hedge of protection, God, around our students. We love them, God, and we know that you love them even more than we do. They are your children, God. So we just pray that you'll be with them, protect them, be with our community, God. We just pray for peace and that we can all just come together, God, and for one common goal, and that is just our kids, God. And we just thank you, even though things are crazy and wild in this world, God, we thank you that we know you're still in control, and we thank you for the hope we have in Jesus, God. In his name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Mathis. I'd like to invite Mr. Dustin Smithson forward. He is a member of the Air Force Reserves, and he is also the Chairman of the Library Board. Mr. Smithson, if you would lead us in the pledge.
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. You may be seated. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda. And with that, Ms. Collins, will you open the first set of minutes, please? We have two sets, one from our call meeting and one from our regularly scheduled meeting last month. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, we have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor by raise hand. It is unanimous.
Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is a special presentation, and I would like to invite forward Ms. Karen Armstrong. She is our Georgia School Board Association, Board of Directors, representative for our district, which is District Nine, and she is also a member of the Dawson County Board of Education. Ms. Armstrong, thank you for being here and speaking with us tonight.
Well, thank you. First, I want to thank you all for sparing me a few minutes to speak to you. A special shout out to Mr. Cole for being so generous and so kind to me and getting me here tonight. As your superintendent stated, I'm Karen Armstrong. I'm from Dawson County School. I've been with them since 2015, and I was just elected probably about two months ago as your District Nine Representative. I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know that I'm here to help in any way. Both of my children went through Dawson County School System, and presently, my grandson does as well. I do want to give a shout out to your schools for your Exemperary Board for since 2023. I understand that's a difficult task to get so, and I see it in your near future. After speaking to all of the individuals here, the staff, you guys have a great heart for children, and that's why we do this. We do it for the children. And I'm just proud of you, and thank you, and it's such a beautiful ride up here. It's been a while since my kids have played sports, but it's always nice to come up here and see the beauty of your town, so thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your work. And for those of you that may not know, Georgia School Board Association is the association that helps school boards across the state to become stronger and to advocate for children in public schools more fiercely, and that's extremely needed at this day and time, so thank you for your service. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is a Fannin County Public Library update, and I'm very excited to have Fannin County Commissioner Jamie Hensley come give us a presentation, and I believe he's going to bring Mr. Dustin Smithson up with him.
Well, I want to thank you guys for having us here this evening. It's always an honor and privilege to serve. That's what we're all here to do, is service the community. And just to kind of catch you up, if you have a moment, just to kind of catch you up to where we're at today. Obviously, years ago, there was a new courthouse building in Fannin County, which done away with the current library that was there at the time. I say current, the one that was there at the time. It was incorporated into the courthouse building, and over the years, it has seemed to have grown. And the need for a standalone library came up several years ago. And fortunately, the last administration that was here, there was a grant that was received in order to do just that, and we're very thankful for that. In 2021, when we came in, had conversation with the late Speaker Ralston, very fine man, we were very fortunate to get to know him during this. But we felt that it wasn't enough to build a library. So Speaker Ralston said, what do you want? Just in that way, and I was like, uh, more money? He said, well, just ask. Well, I need more money. So he's like, okay, here's where we're at. So then it become evident to us that we didn't have any land to put it on. So we spent about the first year, year and a half, trying to find property to do just that. And Mr. Smithson, we brought him up to date on that, and I think we shared the same sentiment when, when the school board was actually going to build this building here, there was a vacant lot at that time, and you guys so graciously reached out and said, hey, we would be willing to do this if you guys are. So we're very thankful for that, and it was a huge savings to the county and also to the library that we were able to put more money into that library to build a better facility. So with that being said, it's kind of where we're at. And as we, you guys may not know this, but it's happened to me, and I've said it to some of our folks who are here tonight, but nothing happens fast in government.
Amen, Mr. Chair.
And I'll tell you what, it's, for lack of a better term, it's been like pulling teeth trying to make this stuff happen, but we feel this year, we made some great headway, and we were able to obtain an architect and a construction manager at risk. So we are moving forward. And if you like, we can go through the presentation, Dust, if you will, catch us up to where we're at today, if you like.
Happy to. So thank you all again for having us. I want to thank some of the library board members for attending as well. So where we're at in the design process is with the architect, PSW, we've talked about the concept, the iterations, what we want it to look like. We're still coming up with a final design of what the external parts of the building will look like, what the square footage is going to look like, but that's where the construction manager at risk comes in. So that's the phase three that you can see up there, the schematics, where they're actually going to sit down with the architects, design line by line. So the idea that the architect came up with will then come into fruition of what they can actually build with the construction manager. Any questions on this before we go to the next page?
No, I would like to ask some questions when we get finished, but if you would like.
And so here we have the actual dates. I know it's very small to read. We're at that orange line just at the blow, we are here, and that, of course, is all the things above. That was, what are we looking in the library? The architects reached out to a number of key people in the community, asked them, what do we need in this new library? What's going to best serve the community? We went through, again, what kind of external outlook do we want? What do we want the inside to look like? I have two kids. I was highly vocal on, we should have the kids section be walled off a little bit, let them be able to make noise without impacting the rest of the folks that are cruising books. And so that's where we come into, again, at the orange line, that we're looking at construction manager getting involved, designing hard costs, those kinds of discussions.
Excellent. And I know, and this is more of a comment than a question, but it's to add on to what Commissioner Hensley has already, like, nothing moves fast in government. Well, you can't do anything with governments, even when government agencies are friends, like the school system is, with the county, you always have to have a contract. So one of the things that we're looking at is the contract actually has a timeline or deadlines. So to stay legally compliant, so Ms. Dawson won't get on to either entity, we needed to just kind of get an updated timeline and kind of see, you know, what needs were and things that were going on, and to update the board where you were at so that they can have those, that information to be thinking of.
The architects and the construction manager at risk still believe a groundbreaking can take place January next year. We need to have quite a bit of it built in the halfway point. There's financial concerns of having half the money spent, if that's correct, by June, July timeframe, '25. The end goal is having it completed June, July, 2026. I'm not sure if those dates answer your question.
It adds us a framework, but I would love to, Mr. Chair.
So, you know, we're in a building project ourself, and we've been pushing that thing along, and it's pretty hard. It's like instead of a round wheel, it's that square wheel, and we understand that. But is there any way to push any faster?
So that's really going to be when the rubber hits the road, getting the architect, the construction manager, county, everyone involved at the same time. I'm not sure if you have any comments on that.
So if I may, so Keith Nicholson, as you know, is in the building department with Fannin County. He is overseeing this as well on behalf of the county, and he feels like we can move this along a little bit quicker. In other words, we hope to be, obviously, we hope to be mostly completed by the end of 2025. That obviously is our goal. It was our goal to have it completed this year as well, but that didn't work out for us. But we haven't been to this point, period. I mean, everything has moved up to this point, has, it's kind of slowed down, but from here on out, once we get the architect and the CM at risk together, I mean, you can see the timeline as we go down, a lot of things are going to happen between October and December. Once that happens, again, I don't know how to articulate anything.
So you pretty much have selected a plan.
We do have a plan, but we haven't got the architect and the CM at risk together to see if that plan can change. We do have somewhat of a visual that we've been looking at to build and subtract on, but when we talked to the architect, they just didn't feel comfortable bringing that particular drawing to us as the CM at risk could say, hey, we need to change this and this and this. So I know early on, we had a schematic of a two-story library. Well, budgetary constraints, we had to go back down to a single story, but the square footage is relatively the same. So it's between 10,000 and 11,000 square feet is what we're looking at. Our initial goal was 10,000. So by coming back down to one story, we're able to add additional square footage on it, and hopefully, we can meet the budgetary regulations that were given to us. Also, and I want to kind of go back to, we did have a little contract, we had a contractual agreement between us and the school board, and so that was something I was coming tonight also to update you guys on this, but also to see if there would be a way that we could either redo the contract or extend the contract. Because, again, we've not been able to bring anything to you up to this point, and now we can see that we actually have a game plan finally. We've got all of our ducks in a row, we feel, and we still think we can get this completed within that timeframe.
Is your board here? Is your library board here?
We don't have a board, but we have quite a number of the board.
Yeah, y'all raised your hands, because I know several board, if you're on the library board, put your hand up, look at that. So they're here in favor of that and pushing it, and I know they're ready to go, is that right?
We're all ready to go. I'm coming in on the back end. They've been working for years on this, so they're incredibly excited about it.
Commissioner Hensley, do you know when the GMP will be presented? Do y'all have that timeline yet? Guaranteed maximum price, I'm sorry.
That should be coming in within the next week or so.
Okay.
We had hoped to be able to present that to you this evening, but unfortunately, we weren't. If you want to point a finger, just say Jamie's fault, and I can handle it. That's the way it usually happens.
I don't see any reason why we can't offer an extension on those dates in that contract. Chairman Hensley, I remember distinctly that meeting where you, former superintendent, Dr. Quatney, and I sat in, I went down to the Capitol and sat down with Speaker Ralston, and it was a favorite memory of mine. Speaker Ralston really enjoyed doing things for his community, for his hometown, and I can recall parts of that conversation, and we got to the point, we're discussing funding, and he said, how much is the land going to cost you? And I was able to contribute and say, well, it's not going to cost him anything, and his eyebrows went up, and he came through with that funding. So we appreciate the library board, and I still believe that this is going to be a project that will benefit both the Fannin County public and the school system. I think it's a wonderful thing to have the library adjacent to the high school, because our students can access it across the parking lot, basically, so we appreciate you.
So you're asking for this extension, is that what you're asking for today?
Yes, sir, that's what I'm asking for.
That's what you're asking for?
Yes, sir.
And, well...
May I ask, how long of an extension are you asking for? One, two years, three years?
I have it.
Okay. So it's actually, it comes up to January between us. But I think the contract with the library to complete.
Yes, the contract for the library to be completed was three years after the property vacated, and we moved out, like, at the end of December of 2022, I believe. However, Mr. Daner had to remove some generators and stuff, and so it was later in January before you all were able to get started on that. And I've got the date here. It says that would be completed within three years of the date that the seller notifies the purchaser that it has vacated the premises, and then that was January of 2023. So three years from January of 2023 would be, January of 2026, so...
With a tentative completion date of June, July, perhaps August, 2026?
Which we will do our best to make sure it's for 14.
We certainly understand construction delays because it's subject to weather and supply issues as well, so...
I guess our ask would be, to the end of that tentative construction date would be August of '26. And I'll just go ahead and ask that, if we may be able to do that until August '26, August of '26, and if we do it anytime sooner, then that's just better for all of us, obviously.
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
If memory serves me right, Jen's brought us a drawing of what it's going to look like. You're going to bring us a drawing of what this one's going to look like?
Absolutely, and I think the first drawing that was presented was that two-story building.
Right, yeah.
I think when they tweak it up just a little bit, I think you'll be very surprised with it.
Our hope is to bring you the final product. That way, you all will know exactly what it looks like, the exact square footage, and again, that's going to occur after the architects, and I'll be on, the construction manager at risk, have that meeting.
Outside of the timelines, there's three things that would need to be met, of course, that, you know, the seller, which would be the Board of Education, would have the right to object to the exterior of the building, just because it's in close proximity of the high school. And of course, y'all aren't at a time yet to bring it and present it in front of that option, but we know that y'all would honor that.
As soon as we get that.
The other one was a 10,000 square feet facility minimum, and then the other one was to approve the final location before the actual digging starts was the three criteria, in addition to the timeline. But I think it's my understanding that those three things would still be appropriate in this contract. So you're just looking at the timeline.
Yes, ma'am.
So then I would say that I would recommend that we move that to August 2026, with the rest of the contract staying intact as it is, and... Got my attorney right there, so is...
Yeah, he was calling you out, Ian.
Is that right? So I'm making, I'm recommending to the board that we extend that to August of 2026, with everything else staying exactly like it reads, to bring back, to let us look at that exterior, so that we have a yes or a no, and so I make that recommendation. Does anybody make a motion?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor by raise hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much, and we greatly appreciate it, and we hope to make all of us proud with what we're building, so thank you very much.
Jamie, I want to thank you for allowing us to work together the way we do, because you've been great in helping us, and so I thank you as well, sir.
Well, thank you. Y'all, I really appreciate it.
Appreciate you all, and appreciate the members on the library board that's working hard to provide this opportunity for our people. I'm a former media specialist, and I do believe that libraries is what helps our society continue to improve, so thank y'all for your work. All right, thank you, board. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is the 2024-2025 School Governance Team Members and Meeting Dates Update from Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Lucas Roof.
Good evening, board. Good evening, madam. This is a document that we are going to start making public at a board meeting every year, and not anything we're required to do, but we feel like it's a good opportunity for everyone to have a one-stop shop place to see all of the different school governance team members, also, you know, their year, when their current term ends, so on and so forth. Also, so Ms. Collins, scroll down, there you go, you'll see also the meeting dates, and similar to our board meeting dates and times, we try our very, very best to stick to these dates and times for our school governance teams at each of the schools. And obviously, you know, if there's an emergency or something that has to change, then we're flexible, but we do try to stick to those dates and times. So again, this is just one public, one-stop-shop place to see the members and the dates and times for all of our schools and the school governance teams.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Roof, very much. Next item on the agenda is School Governance Team Update. Dr. Roof?
Absolutely, and so we did have a busy month. Again, I want to say thank you to all of our principals for all their hard work with school governance teams, because it is a ton of work, and it's a lot of work on a lot of people, but our principals in particular do a great job of keeping these moving forward and following a very specific timeline and just making sure that everything happens that needs to happen. So I want to brag on all five of them for a second for that, and then also, Stephanie, again, thank you for all your work with this too, helping me keep everything organized. I appreciate it. Fundraiser requests, we had several at Blue Ridge there, field trip requests as well, and also facility use, notable work, approved the appointed members and welcomed parent representatives, looked at the different meeting dates, and talked about an amendment to the family engagement plan, discussed the SGT handbook, code of conduct and conflict of interest, reviewed the clip and reviewed their school improvement plan, and also approved several of those federal budgets. So very, very busy meeting there for Blue Ridge Elementary School. East Fannin, they had one fundraiser request and then had some notable work there of approving the SGT handbook and looking at the compliance director modules, and also approved the school improvement plan, and also approved Title IV budget and shared information about the Title I budget. West Fannin also had some notable work there with looking at the summary of the clip, and what the clip essentially is, is our district improvement plan. That clip stands for Consolidated LEA Improvement Plan, District Improvement Plan. They also looked at some Georgia milestone test data and approved their school improvement plan along with their parent engagement plan, gave some updates on curriculum, and also, again, reviewed some federal budgets and talked about their literacy night. West Fannin had two meetings in between these two board meetings. They also had a meeting where they approved, came back and approved Title I and Title IV budgets, and approved their SGT handbook and gave update on STEM and STEAM, and also reviewed some more milestones data from the spring. Middle school had several fundraiser requests, field trip requests and facility use, and then their notable work, again, discussed those federal budgets there, Title I, Title IV, Title II, and approved a new club at the middle school, and then also announced different training options that were going to take place, and we do have a training coming up this Monday for all SGT members, that's a charter training that they'll take part in. And finally, the high school will go on for pages with the fundraiser requests and the field trip requests and the facility use requests, but also some notable work there, shared information on the code of ethics and the conflict of interest, and talked about their new electronic hall pass that is working well at the high school, and looked at fall sports and permits, and talked about the questionnaire that would be going out to SGT members to prepare them for that meeting that we have coming up Monday. Told you it'd be pages.
Dr. Ramsey just wanted to look busy.
Yeah, yeah. So, and then just a reminder to everyone, for the full minutes of these meetings, those are housed at the individual schools.
Thank you, Dr. Roof. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is the 2024-25 Georgia Accredited Commission, better known as GAC, certification, and Dr. Roof?
Absolutely, so this is every year, every five years, we, the Georgia Accrediting Commission comes and goes through, we go through an entire process to remain accredited. So in between those five-year periods, we have to stay compliant to a lot of their rules, a lot of their regs, and so they don't come on site during those years, but again, we have to remain, we have to show that we're remaining compliant with all of their procedures, and so by doing that, we, for this year, '24-'25, have remained accredited with quality by the Georgia Accrediting Commission, and that's as high of a status as you can get, is accredited with quality. So we're excited about that. So with that said, principals...
It's a district accreditation in all five schools, correct?
It is, so are we good for a...
We are good for a, let's show our principals off.
Let's do it, let's do it. So this is a... So this is a district accreditation and it's also for each school. So the first one I have here, this is for our entire school system. And so, Madam Superintendent, I will give this one to you.
Madam Board, will you join me, please?
Absolutely. Next up, we have Blue Ridge Elementary School. So Mr. Mark Young. And we have East Fannin Elementary, Mr. Matt Price. Wes Fannin Elementary, Mrs. Allison Danner. Fannin County Middle School, Dr. April Hodges. And they forgot the last one. I'm sorry about that. Ah, just kidding. Fannin County High School, Dr. Scott Ramsey.
Thank you, Dr. Roof.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
That certificate of accreditation is not just a feather in our hat. It's not just a piece of paper. It's a critical part of our children's education and without it, our students could probably not qualify for many scholarships, would also not be allowed to enroll in many colleges.
Absolutely.
It is a critical part of what we do and it always has to be guarded as such.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Danner, next item is public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment, sir? Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve the 2425 Fannin County Board of Education Local Training Plan. Dr. Roof? And explain a little bit about the process of how it's due to the state by the 30th and...
Absolutely. Well, that's the simplest way to put this. This is a document that is due to the Georgia Department of Education every year by September 30th. And so what this document does is it highlights all of the different training that we are asking our board members to take part in. And board members are required to take part in so many hours of training. But we always go above and beyond even what the requirements are when it comes to the training that we have for our board members. And so for this year, we do have a lot of training options going on that will take place if approved. And the first one there is whole board training. And that is for the traits of highly effective governance teams and that would take place in the spring. Whole board training, effective meeting and parliamentary procedures also in the spring. And then another whole board training topic, facilities planning for boards in the spring. And then whole board training, communicating the school system message in the spring. And that would include one hour of local school finance training. Also, on the docket, we would have board elect training, six hours there for DOE financial trainings. And that would take place this fall. Board elect training, policy development in the fall. And then board elect training, legal trainings also in the fall. And so then at the bottom there, it just basically is a summary of all the hours that are taking place and all the training there. And again, this is something that is required by the Department of Education and is due from us to them by September 30th.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have a recommendation, Board. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second that. All in favor by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to approve to table board policy IEDA. Dr. Roof?
So this is a policy that matches our current practices when it comes to recess and unstructured breaks. And so again, we are not changing any practices that we have right now with any of our recess for any of our kids. We will carry on business as usual. We just know that we need a policy to match those practices and so...
And we need policy because the legislation that was passed actually states inside the legislation that each school board will have a policy.
Correct.
So that's why we...
Absolutely. So this, yeah, so law dictates that we must have a policy...
To say what the law says.
To say what the law says, which matches our current practices that we've been practicing for many, many years. So just some highlights there with this, you know, we are required, elementary school students are required to have recess. We, our schools, we do a phenomenal job of making sure that our kids get that recess that they need. However, also part of the policy at the bottom here, just as a reminder that those breaks can be withheld from students for disciplinary or academic reasons if prior notice of such is provided to the students. And then also failure to fulfill classroom responsibilities or to adhere to academic requirements may result in the loss of that break time as well. And again, this is totally, totally matches everything that we're, the practices that we already are, you know, that we've been doing for years. And so what we have here is our current practice also that we have for policy. We would be asking for, to table this policy for a month for the public to be able to go on and see and comment on if needed.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Okay, Board, we have a recommendation. Is there a motion?
So move.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion? So my understanding, Madam Superintendent, that this is to table this?
Yes, sir.
This recommendation for one month?
Yes, sir. It's to table for any public comment or input. Yes, sir.
All in favor by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is to approve the Department of Health Memorandums of Understanding and Director of Nutrition and Wellness, Ms. Williams.
Good evening, Board and Madam Superintendent. This evening, it marks the time that we come together and I ask for you to approve our memorandums of understanding with our Department of Public Health. We have two MOUs. The first is for designated facility for public health. And this would designate Fannin County Middle School as the primary facility and Wes Fannin is the second. The second is for scoliosis screening in grades sixth and seventh, which fulfills the law of Georgia that we do that for the grades that are, the age levels that are susceptible especially to scoliosis. And we would work collectively with the ninth district in that. And congratulations to our district because we have a new director in district health. Dr. Kay Mills-McNeil has now joined us. So I come to you tonight to ask for your approval for both of these MOUs. They would be from October the first of 2024 to October the first of 2025.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, make a recommendation to approve these MOUs as presented.
Thank you, Madam. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is one of my favorite things to listen to in that school happenings and Ms. Danner is up.
Well, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of Wes Fannin. First thing I would like to recognize is just that if you look at this picture, it really is what we want Wes Fannin recognized as. And we want it to be that it's the connection between schools and communities that's what make our schools great. This past year has been a great year for so many reasons, but I would like for you to really look at that first shadow box that you see on the left. That is what Wes Fannin truly began as and it's just filled with tons of memories. You don't necessarily, when you just look at a school building, you think about all the memories and the different things and how it has impacted the lives of everyone. Just recently, over the summer, we had a family, actually it was Ms. Martha Williams and Sarah Rigdon that reached out as they were looking at their mother's house and they found a little memorabilia charm that had the Wes Fannin yellow jacket on it. And they gave it to me because they knew that it just needed to belong at Wes Fannin. And that just kind of started us thinking about, you know, Wes Fannin is so much more than just a building. It's so much more than where we educate our children. It's lasting memories and it's part of our community. And we're looking at going on the 75th year of that school. The toboggan that you see in the top left, that was given to us by a parent that we had last year as she was going through her grandmother's basement. And she said she knew it needed to be there. And then so it just started us thinking that we need to really go back and look at what Wes Fannin truly means. The jersey and the leather jacket, that's Mr. Mike Queen's originals. You look at them, we won't look at the moth holes, but they're really there. And it's just meaningful to those things. And I think it's great for our community to see that we still recognize what that was. The middle leather jacket is mine because, yes, I've always been a yellow jacket. But it's so much more than that and it's just the memories that are there. So we just want to continue to build that community and the greatness. So enough about that. Let's move along and talk about where we are now. So as we were recognizing that, as sad as it is for me to admit, last year we were talking about and somebody asked me, what's the mission of Wes Fannin? And I was like, oh, hold on. Let me go rip it off the wall so I can tell you exactly what it says because we had had that mission for quite some time and it had just lost its purpose and its reasoning. And so we went ahead and gathered this summer with teachers and staff, anybody that wanted to come in. And we just talked about it because it needs to be something that's visible, that's meaningful to everyone that has a part in it. So we elected to come up with a new vision and that's where we came up with as jackets. We build relationships, respect differences, and we learn to do hard things because that's what we want the students of Wes Fannin to walk away with. We have several new staff members. Some of these pictures are recent, some of them not so recent, not calling anybody out. The first one on the top left is Ms. Hannah Lankwell. She came to us from across the state line from Tennessee and has been a welcomed addition. Can't say enough about the different vocabulary and methodologies that I see when I'm walking into her classroom. It's amazing watching them, the hands-on activities. Dr. Scott Barnstead is not new to Fannin County, as many of him know him as the band director. But I'm going to tell you, he has came into all kinds of experiences coming to elementary, some that we will not discuss. And then we also have Ms. Regina Wright that came to us from Fannin County Middle School in the nutrition department and she has been a welcomed asset as well. Ms. Kelly Collins is not new to Wes Fannin as she attended there in elementary school as Kelly Locke and she's serving as a parapro. And Ms. Allison Holloway, she is not new to Wes Fannin either as both of her children have gone through Wes Fannin. So we welcome her as a parapro as well. This was, gosh, open house. And I think what I look at when I see this is all the smiles that are collected in these pictures from our students, our teachers. And yes, if anybody knows Ms. Frances, Ms. Frances always has a smile on her face and she's up there too. But it was just great seeing that and that's what we want our students to feel when they walk in the doors at Wes Fannin is, if you look at that one quote, it says, "A smile is the universal welcome" and that's what we want. Everyone that enters the doors to truly feel welcome and part of our family. Again, the first day of school, just looking at the kids and the excitement that they were feeling on that day, it was amazing. They were excited and oh my gosh, just hearing the laughter up and down the halls is so much better than being out there in the summer when it's quiet and eerie. So they were welcomed back and we were glad to have them there. A lot of times as an administrator, I didn't realize, but then you start to realize that you become known as like the Grim Reaper because you always just get to share the negative aspects of anything that's going on when you're making phone calls home. Sometimes even when you're talking to your staff, you just feel like you're just always the Grim Reaper or Debbie Downer because that's just the way it is. So we have looked at a way that we can change that mentality and we are doing a wall of awesomeness. This was the number of kiddos that we had within the first 20 days of school I think that have signed the wall of awesomeness. And that's just coming through a positive office referral. They simply come to the office, they get to sign the wall of awesomeness, they get to get in a treasure box. And then I think the thing that they enjoy most is getting to call a parent of their choice or anyone that they desire and letting them just brag on them for a minute. And they absolutely love it. It's great. So then we incorporated, we're also doing that for our staff. They have staff shout-outs. We created a bucket so that the teachers or the students can actually put comments in there for their teachers. And then we have prizes for the teachers as well. And the teachers, the first day we did it, I think it was immediately filled with like 20 comments. I mean, so the kids are really getting into that as well. This is just a glimpse of what we see when we're walking into our classrooms. Again, I think what I see most in these pictures are, is the level of student engagement and hands-on activities that we see. It's from the students using our new audio enhancement features by reading into the microphone, which they love to do because it projects their voice and they like to hear their self. Working with base ten blocks, which I'm a math teacher, so that just does my heart great. Walking around, just doing an alphabet scavenger hunt, looking for alphabets. I mean, anything that you can think of that's hands-on. And then really, we walked into a third grade class and the kids were putting pollution into the water, but then they were having to use different techniques to find the best way to clean the pollution out of the water. So just wonderful things that the teachers are creating to keep our kids engaged. This is the first year that I've actually had the opportunity to visit the Georgia AG experience. It's something, the bus that comes to the AG facility and our fourth graders take part in. And this was something to see. It's so neat that the kids get to go on this bus and everything that they do on there is virtual and it's hands-on and the kids are truly engaged. But then I think the special feature that really sets my heart well is watching our former students do hands-on activities with our kiddos and seeing how agriculture truly is a part of their day-to-day life. In a different task, we are now, we used to do like a little meet and greet where the parents could come in and they eat lunch with their kid and then they listen to us talk for 10 to 15 minutes and they really don't want to see us talk. They just want to come spend time with their kids. So we got to talking about a way that we could engage them a little more. So now we do a welcome to kindergarten, welcome to first grade. They get to come eat breakfast with their student and then they get to go and be a part of that classroom for 30 to 45 minutes and they get to see how their students are truly learning. And they get to see why their kids are doing all these crazy things with their arms and they're tapping letters out and tapping numbers out because they got to be a part of... because they got to be a part of the hegarty learning. And so now they're understanding, just to give them an understanding of what their kids do when they come home and they're making all these crazy hand gestures and they have no idea what's going on. Just really want to continue to build that. This was our Family Literacy Night and our book fair. Again, a tremendous turnout. I think it's one of the best that we've had in several years. I don't know if it's because we did it the first 20 days of school and everybody was just excited. But just watching families engage, and even look, y'all, this is after hours at like 5:30, and people are still smiling, so look, there's where we're at, and that's what we do. Water Day, boy, this was a blast. Every year we do our annual Water Day, and this year the fire truck came out, and they sprayed the water hose, and the kids got to go down the slip and slide. I don't think they could have cared less if that water slide or if the slip and slide was there. They really enjoyed the mud hole that it was creating at the bottom of the hill. Some of them were completely submerged, it was great. But again, just looking at our parents and how many opportunities we've had for our parents to be on campus the first month of school. That's what we want, that's what we need, because it's truly community that takes our schools to be great. Asking the kids what they wanted this summer, we had a parent that donated roughly, well, he's donated money to go directly to our playground. So the kids said they wanted a Gaga ball pit, and I was like, "What in the world is Gaga ball pit?" So basically, it looks like you're putting them in some kind of circular cell, and it is a new version of dodgeball where they cannot pound their neighbors with their face, in the face, but they roll the ball and they hit their feet to get them out. But that is like the event at recess every day. We have teachers that stand out there and monitor and maintain because you can only have 15 people in the ring at a time, but the kids absolutely love it. Then as pickleball is becoming pretty hot topic, we had this tennis court that needed something done with it, I mean, because it's just blacktop. So with the help of Mr. Danner and Dr. Barnstead and their previous skills as coaches and band directors, they knew how to line something off and keep the lines straight. So one Saturday morning, they went out and lined off and painted four pickleball courts and four basketball courts. So now that's one more thing that the kiddos have to do at recess. Splosh dedication and teamwork, that's what makes our schools who we are. Our splosh dollars, we actually put down the new flooring going down the main hallway, kindergarten hall and part of the third, just trying to get it at those natural breaks. The plan is to continue that throughout the school. It looks great, and it's actually a lot quieter than the tile. And then we just had some fencing installed because our playground was not completely fenced in, and now I can say that the whole playground is secured with fences and gates. It is wonderful to just have that comfort. But I think the thing I want to draw the most recognition to is our custodians in that top right picture, because they take pride in such, or such an amount of pride in what they do. The floor was not coming as clean as what they had anticipated it with the floor cleaner. And this is just a year of how the dirt and grime coming in from the playground and the different places connects on that wax. So they didn't like the way that it was looking, so they literally took four-inch-wide scrapes and hand-scraped all the classrooms in the hallway on our fourth, on our fifth-grade building, because it was where it was the dirtiest, to make it look new to our students. So I just think that they all deserve some recognition for what they do during the summer. A lot of times people just think, "What are you doing this summer?" Well, that's what we do during the summer, we do those things that need to be done. And then finally, this is just our staff, and I think I can honestly say that West Fannin has truly become more than just a staff, more than just a school, it has become family. Last year, there were several of us that all got together and went to a concert. You look, you've got our kids, or our teachers, not our kids, our teachers riding the rodeo horses, just being silly. The top right corner is two teachers having a dance-off as they're working, as they're walking down the hall. I mean, just the smiling, they're matching, they're working in collaboration. But then they're also complimenting each other any way that they can, and I think that's what makes West Fannin who it truly is. We are respectful, we have fun, we love what we do, we work hard and smart, we do great things, we communicate and listen, we're helpful, we stay positive, and we strive for excellence, but more importantly, we are a team. So thank you for allowing me to present. Do you have any questions?
I have a comment. Your dedication to the heritage of the school is so admirable. Thank you for providing that, and I think it gives an anchor for those new students that are participating. I would also like to point out that the Georgia Ag Experience that you enjoyed is provided by Georgia Farm Bureau. I serve on their Policy Development Committee, and we pushed for several years to create and build that thing, and it has become so popular that we're looking at a second unit now.
Well, I'm going to tell you, it's absolutely amazing. I had never had the privilege of going that day, and I actually was coming up here and was early, so I stopped by to check on it, and it was like, and I have to admit, I'm not just one that's really engaged in agriculture, because I have, do not have a green thumb. But just watching the kids and them learning how all of that goes into, even from watching how cotton contributes to their clothing and the different things that they didn't recognize was phenomenal, so it was great.
Agriculture's often taken for granted, but that does bring delight, and it helps those young people understand where their food and fiber comes from.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Danner. Mr. Chair, next on the agenda is a safety update, going to be presented by Chief Operations Officer Darren Danner. Mr. Danner?
Good evening, Board. I first want to say publicly, I want to thank some parents that have called and have come visited here at the office this week with some concerns about safety. They were heard, some of them are very, Mr. Rem, your name tag about to fall out, I'm sorry about that. My OCD's kicking in. Some of them are very rational. So again, I want to publicly thank those people that have reached out and called and come here. The ones that actually come to the building, you know, they just, their question was, "How are you going to keep my kids safe?" Which, so again, I just started talking to them. Showed them some things that we have in place, and I've told them upfront. I said, "Some things I can talk to you about, some things I cannot," because that's our emergency operation plan, and which is vetted not only by our local EMA Director, then also goes to, goes to GMA and Homeland Security. They have to vet it before it's approved. It's a very large document, it shows, I mean, it has steps and steps. But again, the parents were very understanding in that. What I did get to tell them, Ms. Danner just talked about audio enhancement. You know, we got fully installed audio enhancement this summer. This summer, again, just a reminder, audio enhancement is a twofold. It's very academic, but again, I'm not going to talk much about the academic, I'm going to talk about the safety side of it. What's on the screen here is a district view of a kiosk that is right now in Stephanie Newman's office. And what that kiosk, what you're seeing here, those teardrops are each location. Top left is West Fannin, far right is East Fannin. This office, this office and the transportation facility is one teardrop. Then you go to the, go to, the Ag facility is next, Fannin County Middle School, and then Fannin County High School's at the bottom. So what that green, this is not live, of course, what that green says is that there is nothing that we're aware of that is going on at those locations on this kiosk. So what this kiosk does, Ms. Collegefield, go to the next screen. I just chose to pull up East Fannin. This is East Fannin's, every school has its own kiosk. And what that kiosk does, number one, the ladies there at the office on that kiosk, they can call individual classrooms using the intercom, you know, just all that type of stuff. The intercoms at all schools are brand-new, along with audio enhancement. You can talk to any principal, most teachers, they can tell you that our intercom systems have been pretty bad. You can't hear, static and everything, these are pretty much top-notch. So again, this is, if you walked into East Fannin right now and looked at their kiosk, that's what is shown on the kiosk there at East Fannin. So what you see on the screen is on the far left, notice it says Teacher Microphone. So that every teacher that is assigned to a classroom has a transmitter, a microphone transmitter. Again, this is teachers. That can, number one, turn on the intercom system in that classroom. It can also turn on a camera that is in a classroom. It is, the camera again is fully controlled by the teacher. So if the teacher wants to video her lesson, save it, he or she, save it. If I've got a kid home for sickness or for whatever reason, they can send them a link to that video, the student can watch that video of the class. Or they could share that link with that student that's home for homebound or for whatever reason. They can watch that live as the teacher's teaching the class, and they could have feedback with that teacher. On the other side to that, that's also an alert button that the teacher can press. Teacher presses or holds that, and then it sends a message to that kiosk. If there's something going on in the classroom that does not need to be going on in that classroom, we'll talk about that more in just a moment. Student microphone, again, Ms. Danner had mentioned that in her presentation. Again, this is for the students, they love to talk into it, this is inside the classroom. On the, go back, and then what's on the right is a duress transmitter. That transmitter is for staff members and/or other members in the school that is not assigned to a classroom. Notice I've got one on here. So every staff member, I don't want to say every, because we do have a few staff members that do not have theirs yet, and those are mainly in this office. But again, as directors, we go out to different schools, so it was time that we put ours on, but we didn't put ours on till we made sure every school and their staff members have their duress transmitter. What this, what these, the teacher mic and the duress transmitter, Ms. Collegefield, go to the next screen. Before I tell you what those can do, they're in every classroom. There's a call button, which is intercom to the office, and there's also an emergency button. Again, this is in every classroom. So if a teacher in the classroom, and we've asked the teachers, you know, if a student won't do their work, please don't hit the duress transmitter to get admin down there to say, "You're going to do your work, we don't want it that way." So every school, we've talked about the importance of using these things in the right way and when to press this. Go ahead, Ms. Collins. So the next screen, so now this is a sample, this is while testing. On the far left, the little screenshot there, the text message, if you'll look in there at the time, this is while we were installing audio enhancement. That's the little yellow teardrops and the red teardrops and the creamed teardrops. Again, this is the district view, but on the left, let's concentrate about it. So we were testing while we're installing at the high school. So we went to that, actually I think it was Mr. Mathis, went to that classroom, mashed the button on the wall, and then on the left, it sends a text message. So every school has certain people that it sends a text message when a button is pressed on the wall or the transmitter, either it's the duress or that mic is going. It sends a message, and it sends that message to the school-level admin. It sends it to that school-level SRO, it goes to the school kiosk, it comes to the district kiosk, and then multiple times we've had, we've had false alarms. We've had one, I think it was a substitute teacher thought she was turning the lights down, but she kept hitting the alert button. That's a true story. So Stephanie's calling me, says, "Hey, there's something going on," and I can't remember what school it was, we found out admin went there. So on the left, that's what that text message is. That link there, that, so the admin at the school, when they get that text message, they can pull up, they can click that link on their phone if they're not in their office. You know, a high school example, if Dr. Ramsey's at the PAC, and like this sample was at 123A, that's in the main building. Dr. Ramsey gets a text message, he can click that link, and it shows a camera. That classroom camera pans out if it's not on. If it is on, again, we'll talk about that in just a second. But then the admin or SRO or the office kiosk, they have options on what they can do. So, you know, if it comes off in 123A, the camera turns on, and they can't see anything going on. You have options, you can acknowledge it, you can accelerate it, or you can click lockdown. If you acknowledge it, the obnoxious sound that comes off in the kiosk turns off, and then that tells, you know, number one, that they're en route or that sort of thing. If the lockdown button is pressed by any of those people, an automated call or automated intercom throughout that entire school, you know, again, it's automated, we're on lockdown, make sure you follow your procedures, blah, 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 blah. And it goes to every building that's on that campus. If a lockdown is pressed, every SRO in the district gets a text message like this. District, certain district personnel, certain other personnel in the district gets a text message that that school is on lockdown. Again, by the click of a button, actually click of two buttons. Because in emergency session, you know, if, whether it's an emergency or if it's an accident, if it's accidentally hit, and then when you tell it that you're going to go lockdown, it asks you again, "Are you sure you want to put it on lockdown?" From my phone or from the kiosk can say, "Yes, I want to do this." So click, click, automated call, then we follow our protocols. Again, what's on the right, this is, we were testing again, that's why the yellow, this is actually at this office, we done a safe alert, and that's what the kiosk shows here. So we can either click that red, click the red button, then it pulls up, and then we can watch cameras if it's in a camera, or it pulls up the blueprint and gives you an area on where that's located at. Okay, Ms. Collins. This is the camera that's in every classroom. And then on the right is just a sample, like this teacher's sample. That camera is zoomed in, that teacher is recording the classroom. Again, it makes a recording of it, it can be viewed live, it could be, you know, you could send out, that sort of thing. But again, that camera is 100% controlled by that teacher unless the emergency button is pressed or something in that, something in that classroom. Ms. Collins? So here's the options that the kiosk has and/or admin have once they get that on their phone or if you're sitting in the office. If it's a fire, lightning, I'm not going to read that to you. Again, lockdown, again, lockdown is a whole different animal. Bell notification, I'm not making sure what class volume default is. But again, that's the option. We, the notifications there on the left, notice that's how many we can create our own. I know some principals, actually I think most principals have put some music on there, that sort of thing. You know, you can play music through the classroom. What is great, since this is a district-wide thing that we have not done yet, is technically here at this office or at, actually at this office, or if you've got a district view, you can make an announcement live or record it, and it go to every campus all at one time. The exact same thing, exact same time, so again, you can make that through the intercom. Ms. Collins? Keyless access, again, I was unaware, we've had keyless access entry in our system since 2016. Talk about it a ton. Two of the parents I talked to this week said, "I didn't know that." I said, "I was shocked." But again, everything that we talk about, it's here at the board meeting. And she, and this parent, actually two parents, says, "I don't watch the board meeting." So I asked them, I said, "I encourage you to watch the board meeting," because I'm, again, I didn't know we was going to do this until I had two different parents say, you know, "Hey, if I would have known that, I would have never, you know, I didn't think that we had no issues." So again, that's why we're, again, reinforcing the things that are currently in place right now. Our keyless access, we have 119 doors that have an electronic device on them that you've got to have a key- that you've got to have a key card. You've got to have a key card to access. The key card can be turned on or off literally by click of a button. It's managed by a, an online system. Each school has one. Some of them have two or three people that can assign cards, can assign new users and that sort of thing. But any new employee, uh, that is hired, uh, comes through here first. Uh, Stephanie actually prints the cards. She sends it to me, uh, tells me which school it is or, you know, I, this person goes to all schools and then I activate the access to that. Uh, we give teachers 24/7 access to our schools. But like an East Fannin teacher can't go to West Fannin teacher, or that can't go to West Fannin. Uh, school level admin, um, uh, Ms. Danner cannot get to the high school. You know, do we need to change that? I don't know, but that's currently how we have that set. So again, everything is programmed on that user per the school. Uh, again, key cards, I talked about that. We currently have 26 buzz ins. Buzz ins, uh, uh, again, you've got to be, somebody's got to physically see your face. Hey, can I help you with something? I'm here to see so and so. Click a button and they access to the building, access inside the building. Uh, as of, uh, Tuesday, uh, as of Monday, uh, we've met with our, our principals here at the office. You know, since we was on a virtual day and just having a conversation with them. Out of those conversations, um, we're adding another buzzing layer to each school. Uh, uh, example at, at East Fannin right now, uh, every morning, I'm not sure exactly what time it is. The very front door at East Fannin, main front door opens up at 10 after 7, I think it is Matt. And then at 8:10, when the bell rings to go to class, then the, the exterior door stays unlocked, but you have to walk into the inner lobby, go to the camera and get buzzed in to go any further. So we're going to add one more layer. Now we're going to, at that, whatever time each school decides to lock that front door, uh, they've got to be buzzed in to get to the waiting area, the inner lobby, and then get buzzed in again. So that's two times that somebody's going to physically have to lay eyes on them before they enter into the building. Uh, that was, uh, I got the quotes this morning. That was approved. Uh, they've been ordered. Hopefully they will start installing next week. So we, yes, that is an ad that we have done this week. Uh, so again, uh, that's the doors. The keyless access entry at the bottom. Uh, I confirmed this week, uh, before I made this statement. I went to every school and talked to every secretary, not every secretary, every office personnel and additional personnel. Uh, before I make this statement, I want you to tell me if this is true. Your daily routine is you log into our keyless access and then you keep, then once you get it logged in, you minimize it because this is the actual screenshot of that screen. So any office personnel at any school has this. So now this is not audio enhancement. This is our locking system. So by the, if, if, uh, let's say at, uh, what's the first one I come to, at West Fannin. If the West Fannin, for whatever reason, needs to go into lockdown, uh, any of the office lady or admin or other people in that building that we give access to, they put a check mark beside West Fannin, they click emergency close and then every automatic door is locked at that time by the click of two buttons. And it stays there until we go in and turn it off. And then once it's in lockdown, if you're outside and you don't have credentials to, even though I've got a key card, if I don't have override lockdown, I cannot get into that building. Uh, you know, we, we've talked to our, our teachers, you know, if by some ever chance we have to go lockdown and you're outside, it, the building's locked down. We don't want you here. That's where the problem is. We want you, and again, that's our other procedures and protocols that we've got in place. Uh, we're always looking, you know, they, they're very, uh, convenient. But I had this conversation today with two of our principals. Uh, we're meeting again, we're principals tomorrow. We give them a week to talk to their people, their SGT members. Uh, you know, what are some things that we need to change immediately? That doesn't cost any money. Just, just some, some minor things that we need to do. Convenience is out of the window now. We're thinking safety first and then how can we make that safety part be convenient? Because as Bowser had to say it, the world has changed. Y'all know that. We all know that. Are we perfect? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. We're always looking for ways to change. Again, I applaud the parents that have reached out to me and have talked to me, have talked to Ms. Dillard, and we are making adjustments. Some things you cannot do overnight. And that's why I applaud the, the parents that I spoke to, said they completely understand that. As long as things are happening, absolutely we do. Uh, I also want to thank the sheriff's office. Uh, we, we had a conversation, one, one phone call on Sunday morning at 7:30, got a text message. Then we started chatting around and we had a meeting here in this office on Sunday afternoon at 1:30. Uh, we thought five or six people was going to be here. We had directors here. We had like 12 members, I think, from the sheriff's office here, just by making one phone call to figure out some of these rumors that was going around about Fannin County.
And the sheriff's office jumped right on it, started working with Gilmore. It was amazing. I mean, they gave, they never hesitated to give up their Sunday afternoon.
Very true. Very true. Board, I know that was very long, but again, I, I felt it in my heart. I needed to say that. Uh, and I know a lot of people are not going to hear this, but again, hopefully the, the people that did come to the board meet, or come to the board office and speak to me, hopefully they seen this. If not, I'm going to call those ones back. And I say, if you didn't get to watch it, please go on this link and please watch this video again. Uh, and then please share that with them.
Thank you, Mr. Danner. And Mr. Chair, if you don't, um, I'd like to say, piggybacking on what Mr. Danner said as well. Not only are we thankful for the people that reached out and asked us questions and had conversations with us. We're, we're learning things from them and then we're being able to tell them what we know. And, um, I also want to encourage parents, and our community is wonderful and our parents are amazing. Have those conversations with your children. I don't want, um, children to do something when they don't know the consequences. They're still so young, y'all, and they, they mimic behavior and then they get in trouble that they can't get out of. But if parents will have those conversations with their children and then also we can be, we can put things in place. We can be as proactive as we can be. But I want to encourage and commend everyone to continue those relationships with our kids and with our families because it's through knowing those kids, knowing what they're thinking and feeling and needing and being able to help them before something happens. That is the key. And we couldn't live in a better community to do that, but it's going to take all of us together. But, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Danner, for all that you have done during this time and everyone else. Okay. All right. Mr. Danner, take two. Breathe. Facilities update.
Facilities update. First off, again, well, I can't see just a moment. Uh, dropped my glasses. They're broke, so if I fall off, I apologize. Uh, completed work orders as of yesterday, uh, since July the 1st, 562. My main department, uh, and, uh, principals know that, uh, there's a bunch of work orders that have not even been looked at yet. They get prioritized, but again, they will get done immediately. Couple pictures here. Uh, new construction. Uh, the last board meeting, uh, we did not have our, we did not have our permit, uh, our land disturbance permit. We had a meeting on, uh, August 21st at Blue Ridge City Hall. Our civil engineer was there, architect was there, all of Blue Ridge City was there, Ms. Diller was there. Um, uh, Mike Spurley was there. Um, at the end, at the close of that meeting, uh, Mr. Coe was there. At the close of that meeting, uh, our land disturbance permit, um, was approved. Uh, before we left the parking lot, I called architect before I could get ahold of our CM. Architect had already called him. Uh, that was on Wednesday around lunchtime. Uh, Friday, uh, Bonan Watson, our CM, uh, they started mobilizing into the site. At the close of that meeting on Wednesday, I had to go to Macon, uh, for a meeting. Uh, the superintendent of the job, uh, uh, called and said, hey, I, uh, Formetco's here. And Formetco is our video board personnel, our, our video board contractor, vendor. Uh, I said, I said, Tanner, I'm in Macon. He said, well, he's here. He needs to know where y'all want the, the video board. I said, hang on just a minute. So I called Dr. Ramsey and, uh, so if nobody likes where the video board is, it's his fault. And, uh, but anyway, uh, but again, and I, and I told Dr. Ramsey, I said, hey, I, I trust y'all. It's not just him. They had several people there, had good conversations. The video board is going to go on the south end zone, outside the fence. The south end zone is opposite of the one that's going there now. And then I talked to superintendent of the job today, uh, Formetco, uh, the video, the video manufacturer, uh, will start, the, the video board is scheduled to start arriving on October the 7th. So then as soon as it gets there, they'll start putting it up. Uh, Formetco, I'm quoting, Formetco is hoping to be installed by two weeks.
Emphasize hoping, please, Mr. Danner, before.
What they want is one week, but again, just like, just like Mr. Enzler, Jamie just said, you know, we only can go on what information we're given, but it should start arriving on October the 7th. Mobilization start on Friday, uh, August 26th, uh, which was a week after they started, uh, taking down the barbed wire fencing. They started putting up silt fence, uh, that sort of thing because of land disturbance permit. So again, I, I'm learning this is the, you know, third or fourth project. So I told, asked superintendent, I said, so when they going to start moving dirt? He said, well, they got to wait on the seven day later. I said, what's the seven day later? So once the silt fence gets put up, then the civil engineer has to come out and approve that the silt fence was put in correctly. So he come on the 30th, uh, civil engineer approved it, which means they're ready to start doing some things. So if you've not been by the high school in a while, you need to go by there. Uh, all right, Ms. Collins, that's when we'll shut up. So here's the first piece of equipment that arrived on campus called just a plain old track hoe. And, uh, and this is about, oh, go ahead, Ms. Collins. Uh, keep going. Just equipment coming. Started, uh, what you see in the background, the little white roof there, that is the tech building that below the PAC. So that's going to be the, uh, a, a very close, uh, place where the tech building's going. And these pictures are only two weeks old, so I encourage you to go by the high school because it does not look like this anymore. Uh, this is at the, at the tennis court parking lot. That's where the opposite way looking where I just took that picture at. Again, this picture is two weeks old. Uh, again, just, uh, just go ahead, Ms. Collins. So only thing that's going on right now is a lot of tree move. All right. So if you see that, uh, go back, Ms. Collins. See that brick building in the background? That is the old gym. So I'm down on the property now looking back up. That is the old gym. I encourage you to go by there and look at that same view now. Go ahead, Ms. Collins. Uh, this is down on the bottom. Looking to the right is where the tennis courts are going to go. This is looking back across to the property, uh, looking back towards, uh, Industrial Boulevard. Uh, this is the old entrance, uh, getting to the property, uh, just to the left is, uh, actually right behind you is Industrial Boulevard. To the left, uh, is the field. To the right is where we put in our, our drain pipe to, to fix the white path property. Uh, again, tennis court, uh, entry. Again, that was like a week later. I, I can't keep up with it. I mean, if I took pictures this afternoon, it would be, it would change, uh, it would change. Uh, this one definitely, uh, again, you've got to get up there again. If you see that, the silt fence that turns, it goes back up to the right, that's the tennis court. Where those are going to be. What you see here in the foreground, uh, that's where the, uh, future CTAE uh, building is going to go just to the right of that. Go ahead, Ms. Collins. Uh, just a view, uh, what a beautiful place. Every time I go by there, if I see a teacher outside, I say, man, why didn't we do, why didn't we cut them trees 20 years ago? Uh, I said, well, we didn't own the property 20 years ago, but, uh, but it's beautiful. Go ahead, Ms. Collins. Uh, that's another view. That was the same day. Go ahead, Ms. Collins. I've taken pictures here, uh, three years ago when we bought the property. I go by there every week and take, uh, two or three pictures looking, uh, I just do like a panoramic view. Uh, it's amazing what it looks like from three weeks ago to today. Go ahead, Ms. Collins. Uh, again, that's looking back at tennis courts. Uh, that's at the far back, as far as the tennis courts where the, uh, uh, where the property's going to be disturbed. Looking back towards, that's the old gym there in the background. All those trees right in front of the old gym. Not all of them, 97% of them are gone. Uh, Dr. Ramsey sent me this, um, um, uh, again, just, uh, anyway, keep going, Ms. Collins.
But the good Lord's smiling.
Just speechless. I mean, it's speechless. Uh, this is the entry. If you see the little concrete there to the, just to the right of road at the bottom, that's the head wall that ends the pipe that we installed. That actually, the head wall's now been moved. It's going to be extended. They're extending that pipe. So again, they can make that bank not as steep. Uh, and also for the new entry coming there, those trees in the background are gone. Go ahead, Ms. Collins. Now, that, you talking about a monster. 1,200 horsepower. And I'm sure some people in the room knows what this thing can do, but that, I mean, I sat up there one day. I couldn't leave. I just sat there for 20 minutes, just watched it. A track hoe is taking trees and stumps and just throwing it in there and it's just throwing mulch just everywhere. Oh my God. It, it's amazing. Go ahead, Ms. Go, go ahead, Ms. Collins. Is that the last? Yeah. And actually, that was the last one I put. That was, I can't even remember what that was. But, uh, have I said, I wish y'all, y'all need to go to the high school. Just take a look. Uh, just ride around, um, uh, it, it's coming. It's coming. All right, I'm going to shut up now.
Thank you, Mr. Danner. Mr. Chair?
We're good.
Okay. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve Blue Ridge Elementary surplus items, cafeteria tables. Mr. Danner?
Uh, Mr. Young reached out and, uh, said, uh, they, they bought some new cafeteria tables. So the ones that are, uh, that are old, they're old, but they're, they're still operational. Uh, again, we don't need to salvage them just yet. I would, uh, Mr. Young requested that they get surplus. When we typically surplus, uh, furniture, we put it on the bid, put it on the website and, you know, we get pennies, actually, we get fractions of pennies on the dollar. So, uh, I'm requesting that we put this on gov deals, like we've done some of our technology equipment and also our transportation equipment, uh, to see if we can get a little bit more, a little bit more money on it. Uh, so again, we'll follow all the protocols and procedures to, to put that on gov deals, uh, for the, for the old cafeteria tables at Blue Ridge Elementary. And then that's the actual memo there. So again, I'll get with, uh, Transportation Department and make sure, they've used gov deals a whole lot more than me, Ms. Tipton, to make sure we do that properly. Uh, if no items, if we don't get any bids on gov deals again, then they will be considered salvaged just as common practice that we normally do.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a recommendation, board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, sir. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, by raise hand. It is unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda, approve Blue Ridge Elementary surplus items, aquaponics. Mr. Danner?
Also, Mr. Young reached out, said, uh, uh, our aquaponics, uh, the person who, who managed the aquaponics, who had it put in, uh, retired. Uh, so again, we got a new STEM teacher up there who's, who's doing something, uh, again, doing amazing things, but the aquaponics, uh, uh, is dying. Uh, so again, uh, so again, here's some pictures of the aquaponics. It's still operational. Uh, but again, we'd like to declare it surplus, put it on gov deals as well. Uh, I'm sure somebody will like to come get this and put it to good use uh, once, uh, once the aquaponics i- is purchased and picked up. Then we could actually turn it into a greenhouse or something of that nature. And, uh, but again, same, same thing as the other again, but there's the memo. Uh, it's an aquaponic system to declare as surplus.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, we have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'm going to say that saddens me because I've spent some time with Ms. Tate in that and it is awesome. I wish I knew how to operate it and, uh, but that's awesome. Uh, all in favor, by raise hand. It is unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item is to approve CN or Construction Manager at Risk for three projects. That is HVAC replacement at three schools, um, Fannin County Middle School driveway, and then the Fannin County High School show barn.
Go ahead, Ms. Collins. Uh, uh, board, we sent out a, an RFP request. Uh, uh, put it on the Georgia Procurement Registry. Also put it on the website to, uh, to meet state law. Uh, they were due on September the 6th. Uh, we had three, uh, companies, uh, that put in proposals. Uh, and again, that's not for costs. It's just, you know, qualifications of it. Uh, again, for the HVAC replacement, East Fannin, West Fannin High School, we've already, y'all have already approved. The board has already approved, not y'all, the board has already approved, uh, uh, COPs funding last year, but we never got to this. So again, this is not saying that we are going to do it. This is saying if we choose to do it. This is saying if we choose to do it, we're going to, to name a CM to do that. Also, the Fannin County Middle School driveway and also the show barn that we discussed a month or two ago. You know, we have a generous donor in the community, but again, the CM at risk would oversee that. But again, saying all that, again, we had three, we had a committee go through our rubric. The committee would like to recommend Bonin Watson as our CM at risk for, for those three, three projects as mentioned.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, we have a recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I believe there is a timeline that's critical on the show barn. We all need to be very mindful of that.
Yes, sir. When I, when I called the, when I called Bonin Watson today to, to negotiate some percentages. I said, we got to get going on this immediately. He, he said, if approved or not, we will do this immediately. So I will make a phone call tomorrow to them. Actually, I'll text them tonight and say congratulations, and then we'll get started on this immediately.
Very good. Was there some legal paperwork that we were expecting on that as well?
We worked with Ms. Doss and we have signed a MOU. Is that?
It's not MOU because it's not a government lease agreement, it's not an agreement that we would use the donated funds to build a certain project.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, by a raised hand? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve district financial report.
Nope, missed one.
Oh, I'm sorry, COPS. I apologize. Mr. Chair, I actually got a little disordered. I need to make the recommendation to approve CM at risk as presented. And I believe I did, but I just wanted to clarify because I caught the back.
You did. I have a check mark.
Yes. All right, perfect. Thank you. Item number twenty is to approve COPS application for West Fannin Elementary. COPS stands for Capital Outlay Planning System. Mr. Daner?
This is FY twenty-six. COPS money, again, it's in our five-year facilities plan, so we are eligible for some COPS money from the state of Georgia. This is for FY twenty-six. Ms. Collis, keep scrolling down through there. So we made an application for the West Fannin dishwasher. Keep going, Ms. Collis. We are eligible. Keep going, Ms. Collis. I can't remember what page it's on. Keep going. We're getting close. Right there. Scroll down just a little bit. The, nope, I'm sorry, scroll up a little bit. There you go. The, I just lost it. Adjusted eligible state funds, eligible state funds. Additional required local funds. So we're eligible for nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars from, from our COPS, state of Georgia. It's already been approved, but it's not been approved officially until the board approves that we're going to accept this money. We sign it, we send it to them, then they'll send us another, another document that says when we can begin this project. And again, I'm not sure what timeframe that is, but Ms. Williams has already got quotes. Some quotes go anywhere from eighty thousand dollars to sixty, I think, Ms. Williams. So again, we will have to update quotes, but again, this is using nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars from our COPS money to reduce the cost coming out of our pocket.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, we have a recommendation. Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Now, next item on the agenda is to approve district financial report. Ms. Nguyen, thank you, Mr. Daner.
Good evening, Madam Superintendent, Board. So we have our financial statements for July the thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So we are at eight point three-three percent, our very first month of the fiscal year, and this is our general fund expenditures. And then we have our capital projects. And our special revenues. And our school nutrition.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Chair, make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, we have a recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just in case there's someone in the audience that doesn't realize that we have access to this information prior to the meeting and we review it, it would be extremely, it would be impossible to see it all as we scroll through, but we've reviewed it thoroughly.
All in favor, by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is sploß update. Ms. Nguyen?
We have our sploß update. We received nine hundred eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-five cent. And we received that in August for July. We are now, if we could expand that a little bit more, please. We have eight hundred and ninety thousand remaining in this sploß, but I have received wonderful news from the local government service division from Georgia Department of Revenue, and this sploß will not officially end until December thirty-first.
Yay! We were hoping for the sweet sploß and we got it.
So they determined when it cuts off, so we will receive more than the thirty-four point five million that is allotted for that sploß. So that is wonderful news. That will have more before our next sploß starts.
Excellent. And with our next sploß already being approved, so we are.
And it will just continue on the neighboring next month and start January first.
That's excellent. Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is Fannin County twenty twenty-three sales ratio study. Ms. Nguyen?
So this is our twenty twenty-three preliminary sales ratio, which the Department of Audits goes through and does the sale ratio for all the counties. It shows that our score is thirty-six point four-two. That's the equalized taxed digest. And the, the way that comes about is all the districts need to score between thirty-six and forty-four. And forty is a perfect score because forty is the percentage that you're taxed on for your value of your property. So this is how that they go through, and then if a county is not within that range, they can be penalized. But that's also at the thirty-six point four-two is why reassessments happen each year as, as we had the large reassessment this past year.
So that's showing that our tax assessors is doing a great job.
Is doing a great job and staying within those limits that we need to stay to. And then this document actually shows the number of properties in the study for Fannin County and how they come up with a score of thirty-six point four-two.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nguyen. Mr. Chair? Next item on the agenda is to approve mountain education bus requests. Mr. Jury?
Good evening, gentlemen, Madam Superintendent. Yeah, we have, Mountain Education has two bus requests coming up here in September. They're requesting buses for a trip to University of North Georgia here in Blue Ridge and the Zone, which is also here in Blue Ridge. The one for University of North Georgia will be Monday, September twenty-third. They will depart the high school at five-thirty PM and would return approximately at seven-thirty PM back to the high school. And then the second one is Wednesday, September twenty-fifth to the Zone, which will be a departure time of four-thirty PM from the high school and would return approximately six-forty to the high school. And Mountain Education will be responsible for the cost of the fuel and the driver.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, there is a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, by a raised hand? Thank you. It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next item is to approve purchase of school buses. Mr. Jury?
Yes, ma'am. We've been waiting for this one. This year, we would like to request special needs buses. Our special needs fleet is, is aging, so we're requesting for the purchase of four twenty-eight passenger special needs school buses. These would be twenty twenty-five model CE PB one-ten's from Rush Truck Centers of Georgia. The purchase price of each bus is a hundred fifty-seven thousand. It would include the following equipment, fire gator suppression systems, which is required on our special needs bus. REI camera systems installed and two-way radio systems installed. It didn't say up there, but of course, that would include a wheelchair lift on these buses since they are special needs buses. So the total cost would be six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, which would become from our sploß funds. All buses will be purchased, used line of statewide contract with the Georgia Department of Administrative Services. And again, this will be replacing three two thousand fourteen buses and one two thousand ten special needs buses. So this would be a, a huge upgrade to our, our special needs fleet.
I just wondered, one of our former people who, you, you stand in their place, if that's a way to say it. But anyhow, he always like connected with another county when buying buses to see if they could get a better deal on buying, you know?
Yes, sir. The statewide contract, we actually looked at two, two companies. There's really only three companies to, to buy from as far as buses. And because we're using the statewide contract, the, the numbers are basically the same. The big difference with the buses we're going with this year is, is timeline. Unfortunately, when we, when, before I was here in twenty twenty-two, we all approved six new school buses. We have not received all those buses yet. We've received five out of the six. We're still waiting on one, so we're.
Maybe five years before you had these.
Well, the timeline on this, because we were with this company, will be spring of next year. So we will actually get these, the projection is April of, of next year, pretty, very, very confident.
Of next calendar year.
Calendar year, yes, of, of twenty twenty-five. So, so that was, that was really a huge point with, with ordering these, these four from, from the rush.
Do we need to wait for discussion?
Yes, we, we haven't, we haven't. I've got to move to that next part.
Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
So board, we have a recommendation. Is there a motion? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I, I'm sorry, it may have been on the detail list, but are these buses air-conditioned?
Yes, sir. If you go to the other document, which it's, they, they list every nut and bolt, so it's kind of hard to see all the features. But we actually, when we spec our buses, they're, they're always spec with AC. And we also upgrade our engines and our, and our rear ends and some of the stuff. We're blessed to have Denver, who, he knows buses probably better than anybody in the state. So we make sure that our buses are spec to what we need here in the mountains of, of, of Blue Ridge. But definitely, they do have air conditioning.
And extra safety items as well as.
Extra safety items. These would be in special needs, but will have seat belts. They'll also be ready for various different types of restraints for the various needs of our, of our special needs students.
And you really don't know what a blessing that is to have Denver to be able to get that rear differential gear. If you get a flatlander bus up here, it is miserable to drive that.
Yes, sir, exactly. And these, these buses will also have the new safety features of the rear camera. They'll have the Intella Park, so these, these will definitely be state-of-the-art buses inside and out.
All in favor? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve to postpone the October twenty twenty-four board meeting. Mr. Daner?
Board, when the, when the calendar was approved this year, again, it fell on a, a week of Board of Education meeting, the fall break day, I'm sorry. So requesting that the October bit, October tenth board meeting be postponed for one week to the next Thursday, October seventeenth. To, for have that meeting, so not only the board and/or staff members, principals and directors can go to fall break if they choose.
Okay. Postponing for a week and at the same location at the same time of five-thirty, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, I make that recommendation.
Board, we have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'd like to know who chaired this calendar committee.
No.
It is unanimous.
That's why he's getting to present that agenda item. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is personnel, and if you all will turn to your personnel sheet, please. And if no one objects, I'd like to take these recommendations collectively.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. We have two recommendations tonight pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements. They're both classified. One is April Hoskins to be effective start date nine thirteen twenty twenty-four. The other is Lisa Keller, effective start date nine sixteen twenty twenty-four. Mr. Chair, I make that recommendation.
Board, I have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Chair? Everyone, we continue to pray for healing and peace for Barrow County, but for our state, our nation, our families. Our society right now, our youth is under attack and they have a hard road to hoe right now. We're blessed to have the support of our local community. Everyone has rallied around the school system and rallied around our children. As Mr. Daner was saying earlier, our sheriff's office is always, has been, and continues to be amazing when it comes to supporting our school system. But it extends further than that. In Ms. Daner's presentation, she had a picture of water day and she said fire trucks. But what people don't hear is that the fire department actually plans for our three elementary schools to, you know, fill up the fire trucks. They come with the fire hose. They support the kids and play with the kids so that they can just have a day of fun that you aren't able to really have in a lot of places. Parent volunteers show up. We couldn't run our schools without parent volunteers. The library board, I mean, building a library for our kids and on our, like, walking distance of our high school campus. So our kids can benefit from that. I could stay up here all night because, and I know I'm forgetting so many people, but Fannin County is a special place and yes, times are changing and we can't put our head in the sand. We do have to be proactive to make sure that everyone stays safe. Again, I'm a firm believer that the main way we do that is through continuing to build that community and loving one another. Appreciate Commissioner Hensley, Mr. Smithson for coming out and presenting for us. Ms. Armstrong, thank you for driving this way and supporting our school boards across the state. Allison Daner, thank you for rocking West Fannin. Appreciate it. Thank you for your presentation. And board, thank you for all that y'all do every day. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bram.
Thanks for all the presentations tonight. As always, it's an honor to be a part of this team. This, the tragic events in Barrow County really hit home for me. I went to school in Barrow County, elementary school, one through eight. We didn't have a middle school back in the dim ages. And, and high school, Winder Barrow High School. My grandfather served as a principal in Barrow County for forty-seven years and then a term of school superintendent. I have many, many family members there and many, many friends. We had our fiftieth high school class reunion just a couple of months ago and I got to visit with a number of them. And Ruth and I were actually making a delivery on Wednesday when the tragedy occurred. There's been very little sleep since then. I've spent many nights in the past worrying and thinking and trying to come up with ways that we can keep our kids safe in the school system. And we're going to learn from this tragic event. I think our SROs, the SROs in Barrow County were exemplary in their response. And as sad as that tragedy is, it could have been so, so much worse. But our hearts go out to those people and, and it's troubling to everyone. We've had a number of responses. Uh, we've had a number of responses, uh, some on social media, and I, I try not to look at that very much anymore, but I would encourage parents to instill those values in their children early on. Right from wrong. That's, that's, that's learned at home. Uh, it's our job to educate these children, and you do such an incredible job of, of educating the whole child. But parents, hug those kids. Pay attention to what kind of video games they're playing. They say it has no effect, but I've got glimpses of some of those terribly violent, graphic video games, and these young impressionable minds see that, and, and then it's there. Love your kids, uh, and, and do the best you can. And if you have one that's troubled, don't go and buy him an AR-15 when he's thirteen years old. Uh, I love you all, and, uh, thank you. It's an honor to serve.
Mr. Galloway?
Say thank you to everybody that's come out tonight, those that are watching, those that presented here tonight. Sitting here thinking while Mr. Bramble was talking about sitting here on the board, and we were asked during one of the debates, uh, what was the most pressing issue with our school system, coming up issues with the school system for the next year? And I made the statement that it was school safety, and I still to this day feel like school safety is the most important issue. I think we're slapped in the face with it here last, last week. If anybody that ever sits up here, it feels like they don't ever worry about the school system, then you don't deserve up here. Uh, I, I agree with Mr. Bramble. Nights of sleep that's lost is, is innumerable. Just throughout the year, just different things that nobody ever knows that goes on, that our school system does such a wonderful, wonderful job of protecting and keeping their kids safe. Uh, you do, y'all do it on a daily basis, and y'all don't even think about it. I mean, there's stuff that y'all do over and over and over that just goes unnoticed. And a lot of it's good things, and I'm glad it is unnoticed because it would scare a lot of people. But I thank each and every one of yous for what y'all do. Uh, there are some that step up a little, a little more than others, and you know what I mean, and I appreciate y'all for what y'all do in that, that part of it, too. It takes a lot to do what y'all have committed to do, and from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate that. I'm going to change gears here just a little bit. I've already told the superintendent, and I told the principal, but our, our daughter had a little accident in one of the football games, and nothing serious or whatever, but the absolute support and love that come from the coaching staff was amazing. I, I don't know how, I wanted to say it publicly. We have some of the most wonderful coaches in our system that I've ever been around. I have never in my life been called and checked on and actually come to hospital with us, sit with us, not for just one appointment, but for multiple appointments. It's a family here. Um, I didn't realize that before I ever ran for the school board, how close of a family it was and what it would mean to me. But it is absolutely a family, and I, I want, I do, I want to definitely want to give a big, big shout out. And Dr. Ramsey, if you tell them, please, that I did, uh, Coach Cheatham, Coach Cantner, the whole staff on the football team has been absolutely above and beyond. I can't give them enough praise for how, how they handled the situation. Uh, my daughter, being a girl, being on a football team, a bunch of boys, they went above and beyond, treated her just like I know they do any other athlete, and, and that meant more to us than anything. It wasn't just overlooked. It wasn't shoved aside. But beyond that, the fact that they would even call us on weekends, say praying for you, worried about you, just let us know how y'all are doing. Like, I can't say enough about them. What a wonderful, wonderful family we have here, especially with our coaches. And I hope that resonates with, with some people out there. Get your kids involved with stuff in school. There's so many things that we offer, whether it be sports, band, key club, whatever. There are so many things for each and every student out there, and hopefully, we're getting ROTC. I'm going to go ahead and throw that out there. But we offer everything from every spectrum. Get your kids involved. Like Mr. Bramble said, love them, support them. Know what they're doing, know what they're into. Be nosy. This is the one time I'm going to tell you to be nosy in your kid's life. With that, I love y'all, appreciate you, and God bless you. I'm done.
Mr. Beard?
First of all, I'd like to commend our superintendent, her staff, and law enforcement who took over Monday. Uh, I'm really grateful that nothing came out of that, but I, I just can't say enough for what they did Monday. Uh, principals, you needed that recognition. You deserve that recognition. You're doing a great job, so keep up the work. Uh, Ms. Armstrong, wasn't it? Thank you for being here and doing the talk that you did. We always like for visitors to come. Yeah, you can be part of our family, too. Uh, Ms. Daner, done a great job, as always. Uh, excited about what's going on at West Fannin as well as the rest of the schools. Mr. Daner, I know you was give out, but I don't know of anybody that could presented a better thing on safety than you did. And that's one thing that gets all of us excited, is the safety things that we have in place here in Fanning County to take care of our children. You know, Louis, he's not here tonight, but his thing is children first. And to have children first, in my book, is safety. You got to keep them safe. You know, uh, Mr. Hensley, I appreciate him coming, and, uh, you can tell him, sir, that thank you for coming, too. But the thing that gets me about Appalachia, and I'm going to cry. The thing that got me was, here you have a fourteen-year-old child, fourteen years old. She doesn't have a life anymore. Doesn't have a life anymore. That breaks my heart. I don't know if I was his dad, if his mother, or any of his family, if I could take that. I know God says that he won't put more on us than we can take, but if that was my child, I just don't think I could take it. With that, we are Fanning. We are family, and thank you for being here tonight. God bless you.
Again, Ms. Armstrong, thank you so much for coming. I hope to be able to work, uh, some more together to, uh, to make our state better, not just our local, uh, campus, but our state better. And it's such a joy to get out with GSBA and to meet the new people. And so, again, thank you for taking time to come here. Uh, Ms. Vicki, I want to thank you because you keep showing up. Mountain Education, every month, you're sitting back there. It shows your dedication and your heart for those kids that can only get that education sometimes just that way. And so I want to thank you for, you, you keep coming, and that's just, uh, tenacity that I like to see, and I want to thank you for that. Uh, SRO Officer Tony, again, thank you for the work. Thank you for the response with the kids, because I, I'm out there and I see it sometimes. I see you, uh, they're high-fiving you, fist bump, uh, you know, and, and they're understanding what you're doing, and not just, uh, that you're a friend, not, not something to be afraid of. You're, you're there to protect and to serve, and I, I thank you for that. It was awesome to see the, uh, library board that came out and, uh, and, uh, supported, uh, the commissioner, because I know they're, uh, they're excited. And, uh, lastly, Scott Mathis, I want to thank you for standing up and just the prayer, sharing your faith, because, uh, we have nowhere else to turn to, and so it's him that Isaiah Nine says that the increase of his government and his peace, there will be no end. That when we start to follow the laws of the Kingdom of Heaven, and we got people that say I go to church and, and, but I'm saying, when you start those laws that are put in place, that I'm in a foreign country, I'm a pilgrim walking through here, but I'm a citizen of another country in this one, but I'm giving the laws of the Kingdom in my life every day. And when I start to understand those laws, this ain't church, but this is what I live my life by, the increase of his government and the peace, the peace that those need at Appalachia, well, it just continues to grow. I thank God for that, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, by a raised hand?